Good evening. Welcome to the Southbridge School Committee Reorganization Meeting on July the 11th, 2023, in the Town Hall Chambers. We're going to pledge allegiance to the flag. Do you like our -- we all have little flags now, but we'll still pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Carla De La Cruz de Villa? Present. Erin De Mello?
Present.
Stephen Kabinsky?
Present.
Catherine Lapiore?
Present.
Andrew Murch?
Present.
John Shaw?
Present.
Martina Shea? This is a reorganization meeting. That means after every election, we choose new officers for the school committee. The first officer to be chosen is the chair. Do I hear any nominations for the chair? John?
I'll nominate Martina Shea.
Martina Shea? Any other nominations?
I'll second.
Any other nominations? That's nomination in a second? Anyone else? Hearing none? This will require a roll call vote. John, would you mind doing the roll call vote?
Carla De La Cruz de Villa?
Yes.
Is it yes or no?
She said yes. Yes. We accept hand raises.
Erin De Mita?
Yes.
Stephen Kabinsky?
Yes.
Catherine Lapiore?
Yes.
Andrew Murch? John Shaw?
Yes.
Martina Shea?
That is a vote. Martina Shea will be chair. Vice Chair. Do I hear any nominations for Vice Chair?
I'll nominate Carla De La Cruz de Villa for Vice Chair.
Carla? Do we have a second? Um, Andrew Murch? Hmm? Andrew Murch? Oh, no, we need a second first, I'm sorry. Oh, do we have a second for Carla?
I'll second it.
John. Okay, Kathy, you had a nomination?
Andrew.
Andrew. Okay, do we have a second for Andrew?
I'll second.
Carla? Okay. Do we have any other nominations?
Nominate Erin De Mello.
Erin De Mello? Do we have a second? Do we have a second? I will second it. Okay, so we have three candidates.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Though I appreciate the confidence in nominating me as Vice Chair, I would like to withdraw my name from nomination.
Andrew is withdrawing his nomination. He has done a wonderful job for us, both as chair and vice chair. His assistance has been well received. I'm hoping very much that this year he was -- is going to -- he doesn't know this yet. Hopefully, we are going to have a budget subcommittee, and I would very, very much like him to chair it, if he would think about it.
Thank you.
This is no -- we don't have one yet. I'll explain that in Chairman's announcements the next time, but I'm just putting that out there. Okay. Again, John. Okay.
Carla De La Cruz de Villa?
May I explain how this will work since we're voting for two nominees?
I'm sorry. We'll start off with Carla. People will vote for Carla, and we'll count them up. Would you like it done another way?
Rules would state that the -- we would do a roll call vote, and that the member that is called will select -- will say the name of the nominee that they would like to vote for.
Thank you. Okay. Let me call the rule.
Carla De La Cruz de Villa?
Say yes or no. Yes? My name? Carla? Yeah, Carla. Excellent.
Erin De Mello?
Um, I guess I'm voting for myself.
Stephen Kabinsky?
Say the name of the candidate you would like to vote for. Thank you for the clarification. Erin De Mello, thank you.
Catherine Lapiore?
Um, Erin.
Andrew Murch?
Carla De La Cruz de Villa.
John Shaw? Say Erin.
Okay.
Martina Shea?
I'm going to abstain.
Four votes for Carla. Again, Erin has done an amazing job for her -- for us. Again, I have things in mind for subcommittees this year, and I very, very much would like to see Erin heading a subcommittee that will be --
Madam --
Depending upon --
Madam Chair.
I'm sorry.
Did you -- did I hear you correctly? That you said four votes for Carla?
Four votes for Erin.
Okay. Sorry.
I'm sorry.
Thank you for clarifying.
Four votes for Erin. So Erin is Vice Chair. She's been very helpful this year. Carla has been an amazing new candidate. I -- I've gone back and forth, which is why I abstained. I would very much like to have a member of the Hispanic community on the leadership team. And again, I -- I hope that when we start really having subcommittees, that Carla is going to take a lead in at least one, if not more, of them. We need people. We need all of our community involved, and it is not going to be an easy year. The next is recording clerk. We don't actually have a recording clerk. The town has been doing it for us. We did receive a suggestion that perhaps we use the same person that does the town councils, so I'm going to check with Dr. Valar on that. Okay. Regular meetings. They will continue to be on Tuesday at 7:00, and very, very much in the Town Hall Council Room. Not -- I know that we're going to have some training, and that will mean that we'll be in various places, but the actual meetings will be at 7:00 here in the council chambers. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor? Welcome to the Southbridge School Committee Meeting, Tuesday, July the 11th, 2023, at 7:00 PM in the McKinnon Council Chamber. I think we're going to pass on pledging allegiance to the flag, since we just did that, but we now have our own little flags. Roll call. Carla De La Cruz de Villa? Present. Erin De Mello?
Present.
Stephen Kabinsky?
Present.
Catherine Lapiore?
Present.
Andrew Murch?
Present.
John Shaw?
Present.
Martina Shea? Present. All present. We have a quorum. We have minutes to approve. They're in the stapled packet. The first minutes will be the ones from March. We somehow managed to get the wrong dates. We have April, May, June, and July on the agenda. It is March, April, May, and June. The March minutes, do I have any discussion? This is something that we're really not supposed to vote on. We just get to under receivership. We just get to examine them, if there's any mistakes, anything out of order. We can report that to the town, and they will make the changes. Andrew?
On -- it's going through. Looks like in the May minutes in the Citizens Forum, the word "running" is misspelled.
Which one?
In May 9th, 2023 minutes.
Okay, can we wait till we get to May?
Okay.
Anything on the March? Just -- yes?
I think John Daniel, right? No S on the end of Daniel. John Daniel. There's no S on the end of it, right?
Okay. John Daniel. Okay.
And --
Yes?
And my name is all together.
Your name is going to be all together?
De La Cruz.
From now on?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. That's easy enough, but I don't --
De La Cruz Davila, the whole thing all together?
Oh, no, just De La Cruz is not spaced out, and then Davila. So it's De La Cruz, space, Davila.
Okay. I'll check with you on that. Okay. No other comments on the March meeting agenda? Any comments? Hearing none? Now, Andrew, you had something on the May meeting?
Yes, ma'am. The Citizens Forum, in the very last line, "running" is misspelled. GN is flipped at the end.
Okay.
And under receivers' announcements, the R for my last name is missing.
Pardon me?
It says, "Mr. Andrew Much made a motion to approve an agenda." I --
Oh.
-- of Members' Forum.
We'll have that changed also. Any other changes? The June meeting? Apparently, that one was very short. Any changes? Hearing none? Citizens Forum, do we have anyone in the -- from the community who wishes to address the school department?
Good evening. Mike Marquetti, 120 Maria Avenue. I'm also Vice Chairman of the Southbridge Town Council. I just have a couple of things I just wanted to talk about. First of all, there used to be a time when, going back a few years, when there was a Members' Forum at these meetings, and I kind of liked that. I thought it gave all the members a chance to speak their mind about the issues or their concerns, and so I would -- I would ask that you add that back to your agendas. Usually, at these type of meetings, even the Southbridge Town Council meeting, the chairperson usually does -- is not -- should not be talking a lot. The chairperson's responsibility is just to run the meetings, and it's the members who should have a right to talk about what they want to talk about. So if you could add that back, I would like to see it back on the agenda. Second of all, I just wanted to -- I wanted to congratulate Carla De La Cruz de Villa and Mr. Kabinsky and Mr. Shaw as a write-in. Congratulations on your election to the school committee, and I wish you the best of luck. And finally, for Citizens Forum, I noticed at the bottom of this agenda, there's a paragraph that says, "Provides guidelines for public input. Topics for discussion may be limited to those items listed on the school committee agenda for that evening. Improper conduct and remarks will not be allowed. Defamatory or abusive remarks are always out of order. If a speaker persists in improper conduct or remarks, the chairperson may terminate that individual's privilege of address." The council received an update from KP Law on a Supreme Judicial Court declares public comment policies unconstitutional. And in it, in the town of Southborough, concerning the constitutionality of a select board policy addressing participation during public comment period, the court concluded that the policy, which sought to implement standards of civility for public comment periods by limiting critique and rude or disparaging remarks, violated Articles 19 and 16 of the Massachusetts Declaration of Rights. In short, the Southborough Court observed that although civility can and should be encouraged in political discourse, it cannot be required. So I would -- I would suggest that you remove that paragraph completely from your agendas, because basically, what the Supreme Court has ruled is it's unconstitutional. And that's all I have. Thank you.
On that, we would love to have Members' Forum. We've been strongly advised not to do that by the receiver, by our association, and right now, we are going with that. I would personally prefer that, but that is what we've been told to do. As for this last paragraph, I'll happily get rid of that. It comes from our policy book, which is extremely out of date. That is one of the things that we have planned for this year. Once we get training in being a school committee, one of the things that we need to do is update our policy book. And I know I had just read about the court ruling, too, that basically, you can say pretty much anything you want to, as long as it really doesn't go over the line.
Name is Andrew Murch, 101 High Street. First, wanted to congratulate Mrs. De Villa, Mr. Shaw, Mr. Kabinsky for being elected to our school committee. It's a -- it's an honor and an opportunity, and I hope you guys embrace it with the same passion as the rest of us have, and I hope that we can all work together to move forward. My son is entering high school this year as a freshman, and with the ballot vote that was approved 87 to 13 on that question, I personally believe and would love to see both of our -- both our Town Council and our school committee have a more cohesive relationship together. With my son coming into high school, there are a lot of -- I still have concerns as a parent in regards to his education and his environment. I don't think that, first and foremost, I don't think it's entirely unsafe, but you can never be diligent enough when it comes to making sure that our kids and our staff are safe. So I just hope that, moving forward, that that relationship that's built between this school committee, between the chair and the vice chair, and our Town Council can help make sure that we can work together to bring about more transparency, as well as continuously making changes to keep improving our schools. And I think that ballot question puts both the Town Council and the school committee puts their feet to the fire, so to speak, that we need to work as diligently as we can and as properly as we can to help make sure Southbridge Public Schools is successful. And I would love to be able to see that develop as a parent of a child in this district. Thank you.
George Chenya, I live here on Teresa Ave, and I'm a newly-elected Town Council, and I want to thank all the new members that are on the school committee and wish them good luck. Tonight, I have the same concerns as Councilor Marquetti. I truly believe that you, as members of the school committee, should have a voice and be able to say what you want to as a member of the forum. If I can come up here as a citizen and voice my concerns on the way things are done, I think you should be able to do that as members of the school committee. You may not have the powers of the school committee like it used to be, but you have the powers to make yourself known and keep a record of your happiness of the way the receiver's doing or not. I would strongly urge you as a committee to get together and decide about a Members' Forum. I don't think that Dr. Valar, as a receiver, should be dictating you as whether you have a Member Forum or not. I think it's important, as a committee, that you show your displeasures or your happiness of the way things are going, and by doing that on Members' Forum, you make a record. You're having a record of what's going on. So I would strongly urge the chairperson to bring this to the committee as a whole, discuss the matter, and then decide if you want to do it.
This is a record for us three people.
Here we go. Yalitza Agosto, I live at 55 Golf Street. First and foremost, I want to congratulate the newest members of the school committee. I want to take this time to announce to our graduating class of 2023, senior class, we're having a senior send-off on August 13th from 2:00 to 5:00 PM in the Armory, and that is with the $700 donation that was collected by the Southbridge alumni, and that's what we're doing with the money. It was supposed to go towards the cap and gowns, but unfortunately, things happen. So we're going to give them their send-off before they go off to college, and give them the cookout and play some games, and they can sign some yearbooks, things that they didn't get to do their senior year, the last festivities and activities they were supposed to do, and they didn't get the chance to do. So I want to make sure that it's on their calendars, August 13th, from 2:00 to 5:00 PM, at the Armory, and it's going to be open to the Southbridge High School class of 2023. And that's it. Thank you guys so much. And I want to also thank the citizens of Southbridge, those that donated towards that collection of the 700. So thank you very much.
I'm sorry, could you say your name again?
Yalitza Agosto.
Thank you very much. That -- that is amazing. You are going to put it on Facebook, our source of all information?
Yeah, I have a flyer. It's in the works. I just want to -- I mentioned it yesterday, the Town Council meeting, but I want to make official here tonight, and I will be putting it on Facebook and stuff on social media for the kids to see. It's -- I think it's going to be shared on Home of the Pioneer page. That's still up and running.
Anything else? Anything?
I think for the time, I think we're good. I'll reach out to the public if we need anything, but I think with the $700, we'll cover all the costs. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Agosto.
What's that?
I said, "Thank you."
Oh, thank you.
Thank you. Do I hear any other comments from the community? I liked all of those comments. I think they're all valid. Listening to you talk about our forum, and we have been strongly advised not to have one, mainly for legal reasons, but I'm thinking that if anyone on the school committee would like to talk about any subject, they can just ask to put it on the agenda, because once it's on the agenda, then we can talk about it, whether it's something as simple as encouraging our seniors as they go off, or something more involved with the receiver or what we're doing. I think that would be -- I think that would touch nicely on the rules and the laws. Yes?
Can I just add to that? What we were told by both the Massachusetts School Committees Association and Dr. Valar and others was that it does kind of skirt along violating open meeting law, because you tend to bring up and discuss things that have not been put on the agenda. And so we were encouraged to, rather than have Members' Forum, we were encouraged to specifically let the chair know ahead of time any topic that we wanted to discuss, and that did include, last year, we did include discussing the receivership and whether or not we were on board with that, and we actually did have a discussion within the school committee of whether we wanted to continue to have Members' Forum or not. We were sort of divided on it, actually, at the time, and I personally was actually in favor of Members' Forum, and I did go meet with Dr. Valar and specifically chat with him about trying to keep Members' Forum. But in the end, with the input that we got from a number of other sources, we did go ahead and decide, at least for now, to let that be put aside and to make a more concerted effort as a school committee to just be specific, and whatever topic we wanted to discuss, put that specific topic in our agenda as much as possible. That does take a little bit more organization on our part. We have to actually think ahead and plan ahead and communicate with our chair, but there's some value to that, too. Like, we've thought through ahead of time, and it's not just us all shooting at the hip and things happen that maybe shouldn't be said or whatever. So that's our -- that's been our plan, and we can always revisit that, but that's the reason, right now, why we've gone that route.
I'm just a big believer in the freedom of speech.
I agree with you, Counselor Marquetti.
This would be the time when we would receive any comments from the superintendent. I did speak with him before this meeting. He did tell me that our meeting -- we had a meeting right before the election concerning the receivership and our training as a school committee. We met with Russell Johnson, who is one of the associate commissioners. He said that he would get us training. As of this point, he has not, but Dr. Valar's first words out of his mouth was, "Russell Johnson told me to tell you, we're working on it." I talked to our MASC representative this morning. She said, "They haven't contacted us that I know of, but we have done it for other districts, so expect training to come very soon." And as we have training, then we will start appointing subcommittees, and I would hope that the first thing they will have us work on would be budget, because that is, I think, one of the school committee's greatest concerns and responsibilities. Other than that, he didn't have anything particular to say, other than that he would present the opening and closing of school report in September, and he would present the budget in the spring. Chairman's announcements. First of all, congratulations to our new members. Thank you, thank you, for stepping up to the plate. It's been a difficult time. Next, on our agenda next time, we will definitely start to look at goals for ourselves and for the school system as a whole. I've sent you Dr. Valar's evaluation. If you had a chance to read that, to see if there's anything in that that we should be discussing as a goal, that -- oh, I know I haven't here. I think that the number-one goal for myself I think that the number one goal for myself is to move forward. We spent a lot of time arguing about what happened last year, last week, or how we got into receivership. I think we need to move forward. We need to have training. We need to have the subcommittees. And we need to be ready to... We've been lucky. We haven't had to put much time into this, but it's going to require more time. That we want, that working with the state is, I think, our best hope of getting us out of this. We are going to be in receivership at least another two and a, what, two and a half years till February? Two and a quarter? Two and a quarter. Two and a few months, at least that long. And we want to be ready, uh, on February of 2025, to get out of receivership. And my commitment to my team will be to listen to them and communicate with them, but especially to listen to them. So please, please, write down, just send me a quick text, a quick message. I'd like this on the agenda. And we'll have it on the agenda, and then we can talk about it. I would love at this moment to say, does anybody have any comments? You can make comments on what I said, though. It's not a members forum. You can make comments on what I said. Any comments on what I said? Yes?
It sounds a bit encouraging to be able to move forward and concentrate on that, making things better, seeing what we can do to get ahead of this.
Okay.
Ms. Che?
Yes?
You mentioned goals for moving forward and that that might be on the agenda for next time for us to kind of discuss as a group. So that would be awesome. I think if we all kind of think through what goals we might have for our committee, you know, not just goals that we have for the school system, but what can we as a committee specifically do this year that would actually help us be more prepared, help us be more ready, ways that we can, um, improve our teamwork? You know, that was a big thing that I noticed at the end of last year was, wow, we're kind of all going off in different directions, and part of it is because we don't even know what direction everyone else is trying to go. And so it would be nice if we could kind of think together of some ways that we can improve our, our communication and our teamwork, maybe having specific responsibilities that each person does, maybe just making sure that we are good about putting specific things on the agenda so that we're not just not communicating because we don't have members forum. And then the other thing that I was thinking, and again, this is, I guess, a topic for, for our next meeting, but, um, was thinking about communicating better with our town council, because if they don't know what we're trying to do, then we're not going to be pulling in the same direction that they are, and that's going to be a lot of wasted effort. So, anyway.
I will get you all their names and emails. Carla?
Yeah. So I just wanted to say that I'm actually already working on stuff, just because I'm very passionate about this already. The reason, actually, wonderful Yalitza's here, it's because I've talked to her already, and I invited her to come, because I want her to be a voice. And she has been a great voice already for our seniors. And I feel like she deserves justice for what she's been doing. And I feel like we should be that, that person, those individuals that help wonderful teachers like her, because we need good teachers here, and a lot of them are leaving because we're not doing them justice because of whatever, I guess, Mr. Valar, whenever I get to meet him, um, will be. But again, working with the town councilors, I thank both of you guys for being here. I really appreciate it. I actually have been talking with them as well, and I said to them that I want to be a united front, because that's what we need here. We need to be united, and we need to do the work now and not wait. I don't want to wait two years. I, I want, I want to see movement. I want to see change. And it starts with us, so I'm going to do what I have to do, so.
We don't usually get applause. Okay, our next meeting is August 8th, uh, 2023, at 7 o'clock here in the council chambers. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Sound moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Adjourned at 7:25. Ooh, that's a long one for us.